Good thing, right?
How's it going?
It is.
The call is beginning to order, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll call please. President Brown?
Here.
Councilwoman Coleman? Councilwoman Schwab?
Here.
Here. There is no public comment this evening, so we'll move on to approval of meeting minutes from the January fifteenth, twenty twenty five, Purple Creek City Council regular meeting. Has council had an opportunity to review the minutes? Any changes needed? All right, can I get a motion, please?
Make the motion to approve the council minutes from January fifteenth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Vote please. Assistant Mary?
Yes.
Yes.
Schwab?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
All right, moving on to reports, city administrator Frank Salvato.
Mayor, we put this information before you from Kennedy Horn. They're gonna be here on the nineteenth at three thirty for a workshop that the council is coming to go through. I asked if they would send the information ahead of time so that you could start looking at it over time. There is a, I guess, the main one, the future land use map. This is, of course, a future, what they're kind of proposing. It is different from our existing zoning, so you might want to look at that. And then they'll go through this with you. But if you have time to look over it before they show up on the nineteenth, that will be good, as you have questions. And staff is still meeting with them, trying to, we have a few concerns. We're still trying to work on those, so. But they'll be here on the nineteenth at three thirty, and that's all I have.
Moving on, finance director Monique Edwards.
Good evening, Mayor Durham and council members. First, I'd like to report on the first quarter device fee counts. The first quarter, the first quarter device fee count increased by eight devices, which is three tenths of one percent, leaving the total at three thousand forty-nine devices. The numbers are down from the pre-cov- the pre-COVID numbers. They continue to stay down about fifteen percent. And for the first quarter, it was five hundred and thirty-six. Secondly, I would like to talk about the November gaming industry report. For the month of November, the statewide numbers were down six point three million dollars or seven percent. Purple Creek's AGP was down two point nine million or eighteen percent. Their coin in and art coin in and table drop were down fourteen point nine million or twenty point eight percent. When I look at the numbers compared to the previous year and the year-to-date numbers compared to the previous year, those numbers are up. AGP compared to November of twenty twenty-three is up eight hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars or six point eight percent. And the coin in and table drop was up one point two million or point seven percent. The year-to-date numbers for AGP are up six, five point six million or seven point nine percent. And for table games, I mean, coin in and table drop, it's up sixty-one point eight million or eight point six percent. So for November, our market share did drop fifteen point six percent from the October number. However, when we look at November twenty-three compared to twenty-four, twenty-four, it is up one point one percent.
All right, now, we do have a presentation on the agenda this evening, but we're going to be rescheduling that to a later date. So we will be moving on to new business. Agenda item A, election of mayor pro temp for section two dash two dash thirty of the Purple Creek Municipal Code. So every year in January, we elect a mayor pro temp for the year. And so I guess we just accept nominations at this time.
If there's nomination or second, if everyone wants to nominate, vote on the nominations.
The nominations? I would like to nominate Bruce Brown as mayor pro temp.
I would say.
All right, vote please. Councilwoman Schwab?
Yes.
Assistant Mary?
Yes.
Mayor pro temp Brown?
Sure.
Moving on to agenda item B, approval of a paving plan and call for bids for the plan, public works director Steve Dickmanos.
Good evening, mayor and council. You'll see in your packet, you have a map. And the yellow is what I'm proposing for this year, with repeat Bennett from third to fourth. Second, from Masonic to Bennett. Then Carr Street from first to beat. The second street one would be a complete mill and overlay. The others are gonna be a edge mill and overlay. That will probably pretty much wipe out the budget that we have. If that doesn't do it, the red one up on Galena and Kenny to Crystal would be my next choice.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, I thought the next phase of the highway going out of town was gonna be this year going up around the corner, going out of town?
That would wipe out the whole budget in one swipe. But we didn't say we wanted to do it, but it is on there, as you can see.
Right.
You wanna go that route? I can go that route.
Yes, our thoughts were try to get the downtown area as best we could with the improvements of car that Chaminet did. Pretty much cars in good shape, except that two-block area going, but we've, you know, completed out in front of the post office up to seat. So, and then the same thing on Bennett. We have that one block up Bennett that's kind of coming apart.
It's in the Gemmy's Inn.
Yes, love that one block. And then, of course, our block out here in front of City Hall has issues. But again, it's it's, it's your call if you want to do, I don't know that the five hundred thousand is gonna do all of that entrance road. Remember, we talked about
It's so wide and long, it'll wipe it out.
It's a lot of
I don't know how far you can do.
I don't know how far we would get. We'd probably have to start where we stopped last year and just see how far it'll go. Yeah, go, if that's what the council wants. So that's what we're here for, for you to tell us what your thoughts are, and then call for bids. And then Steve will put the big packet out on whatever. Also, but I guess what we were concentrating on is more downtown. But, I mean, that is the entrance to the city also, so.
Well, I know up here is horrible. It, it, that big hole that I see hit every morning in that shuttle, it hurts. Um, and I know we need to do South Second. That needs desperately, um, could come, could car wait or?
Yeah, it's not horrible, but it's savable right now, and that's what we're trying to do, save what we can, but.
It's tough calls, they all need work. Like I said, the entry in town is pretty tough, too.
I don't go out that way that much, how horrible is it?
It needs, that's why I had it on here last year, but it's gonna be a big chunk, but I can see how much we can get done.
So how far you think of Steve, you think of going all the way to City Lema sign, or was it Jim? Or do we back that off maybe?
When you go out that way, if you watch, you'll see a scene where state left off, and we take over.
So what if we went, you know, where Bison comes up and meets the highway? Did he went from there down the road?
Yeah. I mean, I could always throw that in the bid. And as I've done in the past, I cut roads after. So I can bid that out there with everything, and then we can decide what we want to cut.
When you award, you can award what you want. So we can bid some of the streets and some alternates. He can still bid Galena as an alternate to him. And then once you see the pricing, you can tell us what, what we can afford.
I'd like to go ahead and do the bids for then with alternates and see what numbers we can get by.
So it includes the entry? Soon as money is, when it starts, like Bison coming in there, all the way?
Well, could be Golden to Bison, and then maybe just Star Giggles, he all the way out, what the numbers would be?
I can break them up any way you want.
So I agree, both Bison, Golden, check that one out, see what it is. And then I agree, I think Bennett's important.
Yeah, yeah.
Second street's bad.
So I will not put Galena on there at all. I will bid the car second out front here, and Bison to Golden.
So do you guys think, you know, from the Gemmy's Inn on up, I know it probably needs work, because it's been paved up to there. Do you think it's bad enough?
We did that last year.
From Gemmy's Inn all the way up?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was the one we did last year.
Yeah, if we do in front of City Hall, it pretty much gets Bennett Street in pretty good shape.
I would like to
There is a spot in front of Johnny Nolan's that the asphalt's coming up.
I have the guys on that stage.
Okay. That's quick, I just got the complaint last night.
So will you still be able to do, like, pothole repair, cracks and all that stuff?
We're gonna have to look at it once the numbers come in, because last year we held back sixty thousand. So I couldn't do that stuff.
But in this year's budget, yes, remember, we put five hundred thousand in for paving. We put a hundred thousand in for concrete work, and so there'll be, you could do some patching out of that. So it really depends on the bids. Once we get the bids and you can kind of look at it. We definitely need money for potholes there, because you're gonna have potholes.
Yeah, they're already starting to show up.
All right, of course, of course.
Slightly unrelated question, have you interviewed any physicians?
I haven't interviewed tomorrow morning at nine.
Awesome.
Uh, the second application I got, the number doesn't work to get hold of him, so. That was all I got to applicants.
So what would that motion?
Just call for bids on street paving for twenty twenty-five? Make a motion, we call for bids for street paving on twenty twenty-five. I'll second that.
Vote please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Have this out next week.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks. On agenda item C, discussion and consider approval to move forward with home rule charter status.
That's on me, I guess, mayor. I know we've had discussions with council individually. We've also had it during our strategic plan that we had earlier. And one of the priorities the council set at that time was to kind of move forward on home rules, so this probably doesn't mean a motion, but I've been in cities where they've tried to do home rule before, and the people in the community think it's because the seat administrator wants more power. So I'm not recommending, this is your decision, if you want to move forward with home rule. My job is just to give you the information, which I think we've done. We brought the lady, Tammy from Cirsa was up here to give you all a presentation on home rule. There's advantages and disadvantages. What I would suggest, if you want to move forward and you vote to move forward, that you kind of give us an idea of how many town hall meetings you think you would need to get the people to come to learn pros and cons of home rule, because they're gonna have to vote. Again, kind of taken through the process, so we want for the people that are here and also for council. It's a two-year process. The first process is you have to call the election, I guess, by August, somewhere August first to September. Uh, there's nine people that have to go out and get the petition to be on the agenda, I mean, on the ballot, at least nine. And I think Erin's on this, you know, she can correct me if I'm wrong. But I think it's nine from what Tammy said, and they have to get people sign their petitions so they can get on the ballot. And the first thing that has to happen is the community has to vote to elect the charter committee, and that's nine people. And if that is approved in November, then in January, they are given by the state law, they're given six months to come up with a charter. And again, they can have attorney help them, they can bring people in or look at other charters that other cities have produced, and they can come up with the charter that they vote on. The council doesn't have any say over the charter. They present it to the council, and all the council can do is call the election. And that would be in twenty-six. So you'd have a November twenty-six election on whether the community votes in the charter or not. So it's a two-year process to get it done, so. But I do think in between or now, I think you have to, you need, if you're going to move forward, you need some town hall meetings, I think, three or four is my thoughts, but you might have a different. Once the charter commission comes up with a charter, if the community approves the charter commission, if they don't, then it's dead. From there, there is no charter. But if the community elects the charter commission and they come present you with a charter, you need to have some meetings for the public to go over the charter so that they can ask questions. So you can't spend money promoting being for or against, you can't, but you can have informational type meetings just to present what it says, that type, so. But if you don't do those things, and I think, I think the council's gotta be behind it personally, and you have to, you can't do it as a council. Can't spend city funds, but you yourselves can speak whether you're for or against it. So that's kind of where I'm at. I just put it on the agenda to see if y'all want to move forward, because we need to start planning for those meetings if we're gonna have them. And again, my thought would be the best way to alert the public is to, again, we put it in the P O boxes. And so if there's a town hall meeting, we can have them at different locations. Uh, we might even get the room of the Chaminet, if we get five hundred people there, that'd be most of the public. But we might have to twist some arms, maybe, but anyway. The, the, I mean, we've used the Butte Theater for this in the past, and I know the Heritage Center's rooms available. And so, anyway, just need direction.
Just a question, how many municipalities in the state of Colorado are running?
We're one of the few.
A lot of your small cities have gone home rule, but I guess we'll go down that road a little bit if you want me to. Any, the town like Purple Creek is right now, we're a statutory city, which means we can only, the council is limited to what the state legislature passes and says you can do. Home rule is different. Home rule is the city can adopt ordinances that are not, you know, I might need Erin's help on this, but the, the city can do things outside what the legislature allows. You, you, you're kind of your home rule, so you can, but you have to live by your charter. Whatever the charter is approved by the community, then you live under that law. You can't do things outside of the state law, but, and the other thing, when the legislature, by state, by the Colorado Constitution, the only way the legislature can pass laws is they have to, and include home rule cities, is they have to, it has to include, the law has to include the four corners of the state of Colorado, it has to include everybody. They can't write legislation that's specific, that has to encompass everybody. Our home rule cities can sometimes opt out, sometimes they have to go to court to opt out. But, and Erin, I've been talking, do you have anything to add, or you want to correct anything I've said?
No, I think that's a good description. I, I think the, the key with regard to the difference, as Frank stated, and I'll just reiterate it, is that a statutory city has the express powers laid out in the statute, and those implied powers to accomplish the express powers. So the first question for a city like Purple Creek, when you want to do something, is is there authority in state statute that allows you to do it? The chart, the home rule city looks at that in a, in almost the complete flip side, right? The first question for a home rule city is, is this a matter of local concern? Is this something that is land use? Is it procurement? Is it something that is, that our state courts have, have said is clearly a matter of local concern? Or even those things that just common sense tell you it's a matter of local concern? And if that, if the answer to that question is yes, then the home rule city can do what it wants to do, provided its charter does not prevent it. So a charter is not a documentation of grant, it's a documentation of limitation in Colorado.
Well said, under the front. And that's kind of the same way it is in Texas. Most of your states that have home rule, and a lot of cities have gone home rule more as a protection, I guess you could say, against the legislature, because sometimes they come up with stuff, you know, that they push down on statutory cities. They try to push it down on home rule cities, too. They have a little more pushback because they are home rule. So in my mind, that's one of the main reasons that the city, because you have a little more control of what happens within your city limits as a city council than you have the legislature wherever, two hundred miles away, that's trying to tell you how to run your city, so. You know, I, I'll just, for the public comment, I'll make a comment. One of the issues that, that we have in Purple Creek is we have abandoned buildings that we can't get people to fix, that own these buildings, and they're just falling apart. Because they won't sell them at a decent price where somebody could buy them and fix them. Statutory cities, we have no, we have no authority over those people. We have nothing. Home rule city, yes, and we'll talk about that in the future, if we ever become home rule city. But I think the city has, uh, there's home rule cities out there that have adopted home rule, that have adopted ordinances that put restrictions on those vacant buildings and make people do something with them instead of just sitting and falling down. So again, this is stuff that needs to come out, and you know, pros and cons, and I'm not saying it's all pro, maybe there's cons that people don't like home rule cities for, and that's fine, too. The public needs to hear all of that, so.
Well, and just to speak to what you said, I think it's important that the public understands all sides of it.
Exactly.
Yeah, just complete transparency on it. Um, I personally, I think it's really important that we consider this, if it would be beneficial, because you know what they do endeavor isn't necessarily really good for um, so that being said, as far as the marketing, like you said, putting it in the mail and heavily marketing the town hall opportunities, and maybe even consider, um, you know, do we do a weekend and a weeknight and just schedule it so that we can, as many people as possible have the opportunity to attend? And I do agree that if we do the town halls, we should do at least three or four to provide that opportunity.
I think in the past, this, this come up in the past when I was mayor, this was quite a while ago, and Missy might have been on board too, or maybe after a few years.
Of our young elect.
So the main conception, like you said, of, of the people in the community, was it was given too much power to the council and to the administrator, which is not true, but that's something they need to be educated on. And I like, if we do move forward to have these, these town halls, and if we have these individuals that come from cities who recently voted in home rule to say how they did it and what's happening in their communities, would be big.
When we can explain to them, also, there's, you know, like Colorado Springs has the council, with the council president, and then the mayor is one presents the ideas to the council, he doesn't like get vote. Or you can also set it up like we now. You don't need to do, you know, I think Denver is, uh, as council president.
Big cities do, even in, yeah, they have council president with a mayor. Most of those cities that don't have a city manager, city administrator.
Yeah.
So that's a count, that's a community decision. You know, there's, uh, the mayor's elected versus the city administrator, city manager is appointed by the council to run day to day. So just depends on how the community wants it set up. Again, it all comes back to the charter commission.
Yeah.
And how that charter commission sets it up, and then the community votes on that charter. And like Erin said, the charter is really the limiting factor of the council, not necessarily giving you all your authority. And actually, it limits what the city manager, city administrator can do, and it limits the council. Correct, Erin? Refer it back to you.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, you know, I mean, the, the general rule is there are, um, there are ways to, if there's a concern about, you know, city council control, then some of those things can be have some guardrails on them in charters. So yes, generally, though, you know, you, you kind of proceed with making your charter more spare than, than full of stuff, right? Because the more, the more you put in there, you run the risk of sort of having undermined what you're trying to accomplish. But you know, some of the big areas where there's some thinking outside the box for a home rule city that can't be done with a statutory city is in the area of economic development. You have quite a bit more uh, ability to be creative on, on how you might encourage economic development if you're a home rule city. That's one of the, kind of the key differences.
Thoughts always have been, you're the closest to the people, so you do have open presentations, so if you're considering something that they don't like, the community has the right to come tell you, and they also have the right to vote you off the council the next time. You don't have that much control at the state legislature. Yeah, you can go up there and complain, but you really don't have the control that you have locally. So giving the council more authority through a charter to me is, is as close to the community as you can get, because y'all see them every day, you're gonna see the people in the community, and if they don't like something you're doing, you're gonna hear it, either here or out on the street, so. I, I just have always thought home rule is the way to go with the community, it allows the, it allows the local people to run their city the way they want it run.
So a charter shouldn't be really that hard to set up. I mean, there's charters, you know, that you can look at, and it should be like really difficult.
No, I think my recommendation, I probably, Erin has some too, is maybe the, whenever they, if they get seated, then somebody brings in recent charters that other cities have adopted, probably about our size. I mean, I don't think you want
You're gonna get into
You don't want Colorado Springs Charter here, but you probably want some cities that have recently adopted them that are about our size, and then, you know, they can look over them and they can make changes or whatever the charter commission is.
Yeah, and I would, I would certainly recommend, get Tammy Tenoy's recommendations on what she thinks are some, some of the best charters out there. You know, so we wouldn't want to I mean, I think, I think there are some that are better than others, so I think her recommendations would be helpful.
I just have a question regarding confessional support for the writing of the charter, if the lenders do approve it. Does C M L provide any sort of support and guidance in the process? Do departments like attorneys to help? So would we need to budget it for the twenty-sixth budget, speculative, the current fees for?
Yes, you'd need to budget some money in for travel, you know, overnight stays, if people need to come in that the commission wants to talk to. They're gonna need someone to give them guidance, an attorney or
Yeah, it's a legal document, you, you need to have a tur, an attorney involved, so.
Who, where is the setting up a charter committee? Who decides who's gonna be on the committee?
People in the
And they're, what they says are nine? Nine?
Yes, there are nine.
What, different folks from the community beyond your committee, maybe one?
It's no different than running for council. If they agree they want to serve on the committee, then they go come get the, the The, yeah, what's it called, position, and they have to get twenty-five signatures or something like that. Of, of registered voters. Then the clerk looks over those, makes sure they have the right number and then if they do, that puts them on the ballot, there could be more than nine. To get on the ballot, but it's the, the nine that get the most votes then. So. So it's not just nine, I mean, you could have fifteen people running for nine spots, but.
I think we should move forward on this soon, quick, get this going.
I agree, I would like to maybe look at March for. And so we don't need a motion on this.
Prefer you choose to vote to, yeah, because I don't want people to think that. This guy is driving us, that's not what I want, I want it to be a community and your representatives of the community, so I think the council should go to move forward.
I would make a motion that we move forward on. Home rule.
Consideration.
Consideration for home rule.
Erin?
I think that's adequate, I, the first step is really to move forward with uh enabling the election of. A charter commission, so I think maybe the motion be to move forward with the enabling of a. Charter commission election.
Vote please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, yes. Uh, that being said, thank you all for being here this evening, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erin.